So, welcome, everybody. I'm calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, January 6, 2025. It is 7:06. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call and the prayer? And then after, Mr. Johnson, can you lead us in the pledge? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Darling.
Here.
I am here. Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Ms. Prin.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Here.
Ms. Julie was not here, as I know. Ms. Bishop.
Here.
And so, our new student rep, Sheik. Sheik Ahmed.
Here.
Thank you. Thanks to have you here. And we also have Dr. Andreid and Mr. Pasca, Ms. DeGray. And somehow, Mr. Bowes is still at the meeting. He hasn't escaped like usual. All right, so there you go.
That's because HR is happening in this meeting.
I know. That's the only reason he would still be here.
Very lucky. Okay. Can you do the prayer and then...
Oh, yes, of course, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we go on, I want to introduce our new student board member, Sheik Ahmed. He's our Nashua North Board Representative, and I was hoping you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you think we're the coolest people to spend your evenings with.
Good evening. My name is Sheik Ahmed. I am the student rep for Nashua North. I am currently a junior, 16 years old. So, I joined the board because I felt like I was getting lazy and I needed to do something meaningful.
I think all of us can appreciate that. Well, we're lucky to have you and we're grateful for your opinion. And I'm sure Mr. Farley shared with you guys that you do have honorary votes. So, when the time comes for any kind of votes that are happening, if you have anything that you want to add, opinions are just as welcome as ours. And feel free to aye or nay whenever the feeling moves you.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. We're excited. Thank you for joining us. This brings us up to our, oh my gosh, our first public question comment period. And Ms. Darling, you now get to be the paper collector. Ms. Raymond.
Do we have a consent agenda tonight?
It is on the... Oh, it is on there. Yeah. My apologies.
We can do public comments first if we have public ready to comment.
Yeah, we'll do public comments first because I was just assuming the first thing of the year didn't have anything carrying over. Thank you.
That's fine sheet of paper, by the way.
Okay. Do you need this back?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure if anyone else wanted to sign up, though.
I thought there was one time where it was pertinent for an agenda and then a second time where it was just a subject.
Yes, so this is for subjects that are on the agenda.
Maybe we could take the sign out now?
Yeah. We obviously should not be taking vacations around here. We had too much time off.
Speak for yourself. Never enough.
Thank you.
All right, Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, Townhouse D. This is the meeting where your representatives, the Ed Council, will be reporting out to you. We met in December, just right before vacation, and we shared with you the results of the middle school survey. This is the second one. And it was, the results were very similar to the first survey. A similar, large proportion of the middle school staff did take it. And the two areas, the main area of concern is the pull-out, as this push-in model for special education. Right now, if I take a look and share you the results of the respondents, 77% gave it a negative rating, a 1 and 2, and a very small proportion, like 8% or so, gave it a positive. So, we do have one more survey that's going to be coming up in March. But right now, that was, that's the one change that was made to the middle schools this year, that the teachers are not, and parent educators are not responding well to the push-in model. In the open comments section, many respondents were concerned about some high class sizes, especially at McCarthy Middle School, and Fairgrounds Middle School, and core classes. And there were concerns about high class, large class sizes at all three levels in the Unified Arts. So, as you plan for your budgets coming forward, you know, we remember this past summer, there was a concern about some of the class size numbers at some of the schools. We're seeing that reflected in the comments and the survey results. So, if there's any possible way to add some more core teachers to the budget for the middle schools, or ways to reduce those class sizes in the Unified Arts, I would highly encourage you to do that as you're planning for the budget coming forward. So, I know that you're going to get another update about Ed Council in this meeting, but I figured I would give my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No one else has signed up for first public comment, so I'm going to double back around and ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond made the motion. Mr. Claffey seconded. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Nay, Ms. Darling's a nay.
Thank you. Can't forget me.
I know. You were just so quiet over there.
I was just actually thinking about how we were hitting that point where I should go on my spiel reminding of why I vote nay every time, especially now that our newer board members have been here long enough to start seeing some of the same issues that I see, potentially. But I have not necessarily prepared anything to say tonight. So, next month, you should probably wait. I might have comments.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, this brings us up to our superintendent's comments.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody. As you know, about two months ago, we hired a social media coordinator. Over the last two months, Mr. Dion has been diligently visiting classrooms, visiting schools, interviewing people, and we're getting ready for our launch of our social media platforms. Facebook page will be coming out. He has a calendar of posts already. They look exciting, but I think, you know, we've been waiting for more proactive messaging on all the greatness happening in the district. So, be on the lookout for a couple notifications over the next couple of weeks on information around our social media platforms and really celebrating the successes in the classrooms. So, we'll be highlighting some students, schools, clubs, activities, and then just the ongoing, day in and day out of the district. So, over the last couple of years, we've noted, especially to myself, we haven't been really proactive in sharing our successes. So, we do have a calendar of posts going out and really looking to bring some excitement to the things going on in our classroom. So, real excited for it, especially as we just talked about, especially going into budget season, where I think our community needs to see where is the return on the investment. And I think we're, everyone around this horseshoe knows the quality of teaching and learning going on in our classrooms, but we just need to reiterate that to the general public. So, really excited about launching our social media campaign in the next couple of weeks. So, be on the lookout.
Excellent. This brings us up to our board response to the superintendent's comments. And so sorry, Ms. Darling. Your first. I'll switch it up. I'll bounce back and forth. I'm not too worried about it. Oddly enough, being here for three years, you get a little bit more used to having to talk to the mic. But I think, I did have a question about the social media posts that would be happening. Would that also include, like, any big-ticket items that, like, we discuss on the board, or maybe ways of getting out new policies or things that different buildings want to try? Excuse me.
Yes.
I love that. That's awesome. Short and sweet. Okay. Ms. Raymond.
Yeah, I'm really excited to see this. I think there are a lot of really great things going on in our buildings that the community at large just isn't aware of. And so, I'm absolutely thrilled to have a vehicle to share some of the things that our students and staff are doing. I do want to put the bug in our ear that we do have a sample policy for social media, that I was hoping we would get the new person's opinion on. So, hopefully, that will be coming up to a policy committee meeting, and then we can get some feedback from the community, too, to make sure that we are aligned with our community values. And then, I would like a little bit more information as we go forward, just in general, about this push-in, no, pull, I don't know, pull-in, pull-out, put...
Push-in.
Push-in. Because I don't have any knowledge of that whatsoever, and I feel like there's a knowledge gap there. So, it makes it really difficult for me to know, to evaluate what people are saying.
Ms. Prin.
Yeah, welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. And I'm also excited for the new social media. I'd love to be able to see more about what's going on in our schools. Do we have a date yet for that? Or is it just...
I don't want to put it out there, but I think it's next Monday, but...
Next Monday, okay. No, I'm just looking forward to it.
I don't want to say next Monday if it's not next Monday.
And do we know, is it going to be just Facebook and Instagram? Or...
It'll be, Cam will give a full explanation.
Okay, okay. That'll be great. All right, looking forward to it.
Mr. Claffey.
No comment.
No comment. Mr. Johnson.
Just excited to see what Cam brings. You know, it's a good step forward for us to have that social media presence and for it to be handled by the administration so that ideally, we also want to see that consistency and see him work with, like, parents and PTOs to, you know, make sure that, like Heather said, we have policies and we want to make sure that everyone's following them, and this is a good way to have everyone sort of under one umbrella with the social media.
Yeah. Ms. Daniels-Williams.
I just want to say Happy New Year and welcome back to all the students in the Nashville School District. And we're looking forward to lots of new things this year. And thankful to hear that we'll have a social media presence that will highlight the spectacular things that the students are doing here in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier. I've, like, asked no comment. Sorry. I'm also excited for the social media presence. I think it'll be a great way to unsilo our schools by having kind of that one message and that one Nashua. So, I'm excited to see it taking off. And that is all I have. This brings us up to the student member of the board comments, but I'm sure you don't have anything prepared. So, I'll give you the floor, and you can say as much or as little as you want.
I will say, this does sound exciting. I think social media is not just a great way to reach parents, but also reach students. And I think that'll be very informative.
Yeah, I have to say, I get most of my information about Nashua North from the Nashua North Facebook page, and I have to screenshot it and go, "It's pajama day tomorrow." And, like, kids always wear pajamas, so it's not a big deal, but that's all I learned. Okay. So, this brings us on to our committees. We don't have any updates. It doesn't bring us to committees. It brings us through committees. It brings us up to new business, and I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andreid.
So, we're looking for a recommendation to approve on the personnel recommendations of January 6, 2025, that were in your packet.
Hold on one second.
Can I intervene real quick? The line one for the recommendations, the name on there, they declined, so we are going to move forward with these recommendations minus number one.
So, the motion needs to be to approve the personnel recommendations stated today, with the exception of nomination number one.
Correct. So moved.
So, even though it didn't go through the HR committee today? Because there was a meeting?
So, we need to do two things. We need to make a motion, probably, to waive the rules to allow an HR item to skip HR. And then make a motion to approve it.
Yes.
I know you put it on new business, but technically...
But do we have to do that? Or can we wait for an HR? Why are we skipping something?
Procedurally, yes, we could wait for the next HR. However, I'm looking at some of these hires, and I don't want to leave our ELL students, our grade-one students, without an instructor for the next two weeks until we meet again.
Now that the committees are set, can't we set a special meeting for that? Like, should we just have to roll it through if that's what we're going to do? I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're going to do.
Well, we can discuss the nominations now. We can actually have the HR committee meeting now.
Yep. So, the only rule for that is if we want to discuss any personally identifiable information...
We have to go into non-public.
Which is fine.
Yeah. So, you have specific things that you want to address on the nominations?
It's just that I didn't, you know, we didn't hear anything other than the name, the amount, and the grade. Like, you know what I mean? We don't know anything. I don't know anything about these people. And I know that you and Rob sit on the HR committee, so you guys could give us more information, like, give us more than a name and a number. And effective, like, because...
So, might I suggest, might I suggest that we do two things? One, that we make the motion to suspend the rules to consider these items, just to make sure, which I'm sure it's fine.
Regan's writing down the motion now.
Can you say the words, Heather, like the... I move that we suspend the rules to consider personnel recommendations at the full board without having an HR meeting.
Okay.
Then, just to speak to that, my next motion will be to go into non-public to answer any questions people have about any of the items on the personnel list. And then we can come back out, vote, and then talk about the other items that are in here that we usually talk about, which is the HR update.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. So, Ms. Raymond made the motion. Mr. Johnson seconded it. All those in favor...
Can I, before we vote on that, can I say something?
Yeah.
Because I don't, we're voting to go to non-public.
No, we're voting to just suspend the rules for the HR committee.
Okay, then I'll speak when you let me.
Yep. Okay. So, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion is to go into non-public under RSA 91A32A. And if we discover in non-public that we didn't need it, we can always not seal the minutes.
Mr. Claffey.
So, we're now looking at four appointments, right? These aren't administrative roles, and having been a head teacher, I know there was an urgent need in social studies to replace that position. These are continuing subpositions. There's only four, and that's all we're approving. We're approving resignations, but that's not important. I really don't see the need to go into non-public. Mr. Bowes, you vetted these people. I don't know if you, how much information you typically give members of the committee on continuing subs. It's a very, very, very difficult time, time of the year, to find anybody looking for a teaching position midway through a school year. So, my guess is, Mr. Bowes, the pickings weren't exactly abundant. Mr. Bowes.
No worries. It's actually Bows, but that's all right. Just to kind of reiterate, we typically, in the HR committee, we don't go into detail about each person. It's really more specific questions about maybe their resume that's attached, or their grades, or transcripts, or whatnot, is typically the questions that I get. It's not typically going line by line of each person and vetting each one. It's really just specific questions you guys might have.
So, hearing that, do we have people that have questions that we need to go into non-public for?
I withdraw my request.
Okay. So, we don't need non-public.
That's fine. I was only making the motion to make sure people had their questions asked. So, I withdraw.
Okay. Cross it out. Sorry, Ms. Lampier.
Didn't even write it down yet.
Excellent. Okay.
I wish, I'm sorry. I just, who was on the committee most recently? Besides you, so I guess, having been on the committee, have you seen enough to go ahead and move forward with these nominations?
Yeah, especially like you were saying, these are teacher positions, these are long-term subs, so these aren't administrative where we need to really sit down and have a discussion. This is much more needed positions for teachers.
And just to add, two of the four have worked for us before.
And for people who haven't been on HR before, there is a process that happens before people get to HR, where by the time they get to our committee, they've had their interviews, they've had background checks. These are people who have been really thoroughly vetted according to every policy that we have. Occasionally, board members do have a question about a specific candidate because of some other knowledge or something that they've heard that they want to double-check with HR. Or maybe we look at the pay and say, "This doesn't look like it matches the teacher's contract. Can we ask about it?" But I didn't see anything that seemed unusual in this list.
No.
Which will become public once we agree to it.
Yes. Okay.
So, can I make a motion to approve?
The personnel?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions about the personnel recommendations for January 6, 2025? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the personnel recommendations, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I do have a question. So, Mr. Bows included the update, the HR update. And so, I know that it is not a bullet on our agenda this evening, but Mr. Bows knows what I'm going to ask, because I ask every single HR meeting, how vacancies are impacting service delivery? Are there classes that we are not going to be able to offer this trimester, or the semester that starts at the end of the month? Or are there students who aren't getting their IEPs met as a result of these vacancies?
Not at this time. The, where is it here? The graphic design teacher we were able to find, which was one of the nominations, that was one of my worries, but we were able to find that, so we're not having, we do not have to stop the graphic design class.
Fantastic. Yay.
Yeah, that's near and dear to me. I don't want us to lose graphic design.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, my other question that I almost always ask is, are there any job fairs or other outreach efforts that the district is doing? And is there a seasonality to it? Because it's January. I don't know how many people are looking for a new job in education in January.
Yeah, typically, we do our job fairs late March, early April. And I did, we, this is when the colleges are starting to plan their job fairs as well. The first job fair that we have up that we're about to get signed up for is at the end of February at UNH. Once I get all the timelines and dates for all the job fairs, I'll provide it and bring it to the HR committee as well.
And last one, seasonality. It is Assistant Superintendent season. Who near us? Somebody, I think Hollis Brookline is just, is working on hiring someone as well. So, are we moving forward on posting that job or recruiting people?
We have interviews with four candidates next Monday.
Fantastic. Yay.
Ask a question, we have an answer.
See, this is what that HR meeting is like. I just quiz Dr. Mario and Mr. Bows endlessly about everything they give us.
Yes. Okay. Does Mr. Bows want to speak to the paperwork that's in there? Did you answer at all with what...
Yeah, I can give a quick rundown of the open positions. So, real quick, just total, not including paras. I'll lump in the paras afterwards. We have 73 total openings. Of those openings, 24 of them are teachers. If you want a more breakdown, 12 at the elementary level, nine at the middle school level, three at the high school level. We are short five, I call it six, school psychologists. We're down three speech-language pathologists. We just lost one. They went through the board last time. Skipping over paras for the time being. Food service, we have 15 openings. Plan ops, we have 19, 15 of them being crossing guards. So, I like to kind of narrow it down to the two custodian positions and the alarm tech and HVAC mechanic that we're looking for. Admin roles, we have four. Mario mentioned the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary that we're going to be doing interviews next week on. We have the Civil Rights Compliance Coordinator, the AP at Amherst Street, and the Transportation Coordinator. And then, just to wrap it up, the two secretaries. We have one at Penachuck and one at New Searls. The New Searls one is actually in internal promotion into, so it's not really a loss. And then, just to go into paras, total vac, or I guess, total openings for paras, we have 51 with 28 contractors in positions, which leave a total vacancy of 23 vacant positions in the para educators. And that concludes my update.
Ms. Raymond.
I recall that for the Amherst Street Assistant Principal, we had hired someone with a, I don't know, a delayed start date. Is that still happening?
Yep. We actually, I would say, within the next week or two, we'll be, you'll see that come through.
Great. This is good news, sort of. I would love to see the rest of them filled, but...
Yeah.
Looking away.
Is it just me, or does it feel like some of these are higher than last month? Like, custodians feels a little bit higher? The plant operations feels higher.
Custodians is the same. Food service, I think, is up like two. Teachers is up a couple as well.
Yeah.
But other than that, no, they're pretty stagnant.
Okay. Ms. Lampier.
I was just wondering about the school psychologists and the speech-language pathologists, because I know that those are positions
Um, because I know that those are positions that we, um, have been contracting out, um, because we have to. Are those vacancies, like, are you counting the contractors? And we still have all these vacancies? Or is that vacancies that are currently being filled by contractors?
Uh, so we do have teachers that I haven't reported. So next, uh, board meeting on my update, I will include the teacher contractors that we have in there as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Uh, this brings us up to the fiscal year 26 budget presentation preparation conversation.
Yeah, so this was, um, put it on the agenda as we're starting to prepare. Uh, we've had, uh, a few conversations over the years on what information would you like to see? As we, you know, Ms. Raymond was appointed tonight as the budget chair, but this is the time of year, um, we'll be starting to schedule, uh, budget presentations. But as we're preparing it on the admin side, there's a lot of information. So we've gone really in detail years, years ago, and then we went really skinny. So I'm really looking as we're preparing some of the, um, presentations, what type of information you're looking for. And, you know, I'll just put it out there, um, in speaking with Mr. Gray. Um, we know that we'll probably need a good, like, three-hour, like, workshop on just high-level, what's our revenue, what's our expenses, what's grandfa, like, what, how were the lines broken down? Um, so we know there needs to be just a educational kind of background of where, like, how is the budget made? Where are some of the lines and some rationale beyond that? So we know that's going to be important during that meeting. Just delineating, um, you know, grant revenue coming in, whether it's Title I, Title II, Title III. So we know we need to go really big picture. But from there, also, what type of information would you like to see? Whether in department meetings or, um, just questions in general that you have? So then, when we're preparing for these meetings, um, even though it's January 6th, it's around the corner where, um, these presentations are going to be happening. So just, we would, yeah, which is around the corner, right? So, um, just on the admin side, we just want to be ready for our presentations going forward. So any kind of feedback or input, um, don't want to put you on the spot tonight, but, um, we are in that process right now on preparing our budget and presentations.
Ms. Raymond, do you have an?
You're like, obviously Heather's ready. Heather has questions.
So the thing that I, the thing that I liked, and I've, I've sat through many, many budget cycles at this point, is I find the big, huge binder tedious, and that's not, that's not how I learn just personally. It's how Ms. Raymond learns, and she loves it.
I'm really struggling to answer constituent questions when I don't have the big binder.
Right.
Like, I get people who are like, hey, Edelba is changing, is cutting us 30% on extraordinary needs grants. How is that going to affect Nashua? And I'm like, I don't know, I can't find it on the website. You're going to have to ask someone at admin.
So I'm wondering if you have an old, so what I would like you guys to do is give your feedback to us about what you would like to see come budget season. But that means that you're going to need to do a little legwork and a little homework. So go back to like, maybe 10 years ago where it was really binder-focused about what those board meetings looked like, they're on YouTube. Heather, if you have an old binder with the 17 slices with all of the paperwork in it, I'm sure mine is in my basement somewhere, but I can't guarantee a cat hasn't, like, puked on it or something.
So the binders are electronic. And so it's just.
No, I know, but just to give them, like.
I know, I just, I just don't want the.
What it looks like to come in here with the big.
Yeah, I just don't want the, um.
Expectation to be printed?
No, well, or that binder's.
Because that's a line item itself.
Binders weren't giving out. It was just an electronic form instead of being printed out. So there are electronic forms of the binder.
No, but I'm going back even before it was.
But I just don't want someone to say, we didn't give out binders last year.
Oh, no, no, to Dr. Andre's point. So you can look at what was.
Right, if you go on our website, a significant amount of data is on the website.
Yes.
However, being able to take that data and answer the question of, well, how much extraordinary needs grants are we getting? And what does a 30% cut look like? What is our spending on special ed transportation? And if we lose funding on that, like, what does that mean? How much are we spending on transportation that is assigned to charter and private schools versus our public school students? You know, those are the questions that we have. And then during the budget process, we frequently ask, like, how much would it cost us to add free busing at the high schools instead of charging? Like, if we can't find how much it costs now, it's hard to extrapolate those kinds of things. Um, so that's kind of more of the detail that I'm looking for, is so that, so that, um, people at Nashua understand where their money is going. Um, I'm thinking about Kirsaaj, who had a big hearing on Saturday.
Yes, they did.
Um, and a lot of, um, a lot of the feedback that led to their budget cap discussion was about, listen, we pay teachers, you know, $70,000 or $80,000 a year, you know, for a teacher who's been around a lot. And we have this many students, and then we pay this for the overhead. So where's the rest of the money going?
Right.
Like, I can't tell you how many times I heard, well, there's a 735, you know, $1,000 gap here. So I think, I think that, um, we need to be able to connect the dots to say, you know, um, this is how much these, these kind of programs cost, and this is what the difference is. So that, maybe we can't do anything about it. Transportation costs what transportation costs, and it's required by the, by state law. And then we're kind of stuck with contractors, because there's only one person who does it.
Yep.
But I think it's important for people to know that if transportation goes up 25%, and extraordinary needs grant funding goes down 25%, and the legislature decides that they're not going to follow the court orders to provide us more pupil's funding, like, this is why we're getting squeezed. And so it's, it's both big picture and details that I'm looking for. Does that?
Yeah, can I jump in?
Yes, please.
So I think that all makes sense, you know, kind of high-level view of operating budget, grant-funded revenue, special revenue. But also, what questions do you folks get each year, right? And to me, Heather, what you're saying is, it's almost like a frequent question and answer slide or something, right? So you have that information at your fingertips. I've seen some budget books that are multiple pages that I don't know that we need to go into that level of detail unless you folks want it. But also, on the flip side, we are hearing that, you know, special education funds are going to be cut. Well, what's that full picture look like, right? Special education might be coming down, but adequacy aid is going up. So where's that difference? And I think based off of Dr. Andre's comments, you know, that's where that educational piece comes into play to say, well, yes, that's what we're hearing, but what's that true picture and that true message, right? So it's not that panic by families to say, oh, no, I have a child, myself included, at another district that has special education needs and requirements and IEPs. Is that going away?
Right.
Right? Because that then becomes personal. So it's what does adequacy aid look like? What does special revenue look like? All of those pieces. And then maybe it's a couple one-pagers or something that's constantly on our website. We can use the webmaster to say, here's some facts, and it's easier for folks to kind of get some of those messages.
Yeah, I think that would help. Because I think the general, like, the average person is, like, my textbook keeps going up. There's fewer students, like, and, and not being able to easily connect the dots for people. And then those of us who went to school funding webinars all summer long are like freaking out about the fact that the whole harmless grant goes down every year, and there's not a plan to replace that money at the state level. Um, and we know that the state is looking right now to not, uh, fund public education. So I'm, I, I'm, yeah, multiple levels. But then also, what are Nashua's unique needs that are maybe different than our neighbors? Right? Because we certainly have a higher number of kids with special ed. We provide a number of programs that aren't found elsewhere. And the same thing with, like, English language learners. You know, um, I know that there are teachers in Hollis who have never had an English language learner student in their career, um, and we're up to 20-something percent, so.
I know typically, budget chair doesn't necessarily kind of like plan the agenda like we do for all of the other committees, but I'm wondering if beforehand, um, you know, before the week that's coming up, if, if there are some glaring questions that are going to be there, if you just want to connect before. And then we can just kind of plan ahead for that, just to add more to your plate, because it's a huge plate and you can totally carry it. Is that, is that okay to do? Okay. Mr. Claffey?
I would like to see a nice, short, concise summary of how much of our, of last year's budget was, uh, paid for with federal grant funds. Maybe a total dollar figure and then a percentage, just to give people a sense of, I don't know whether it makes sense to go back three years, just last year, but if you had to, it's, it's a big number, right?
Yeah.
And I think people need to understand that.
Yeah, the funding trends.
Yeah.
And also, maybe it anticipated cuts in state. Are we there yet? Do we know of? I guess they haven't made those cuts yet because they.
So the state hasn't created its.
Okay, so don't do that.
Biannual budget yet. Um, having said that, the, it looks like the state is going to lose the fair funding lawsuit, uh, which Nashua is a part of, by the way. Um, they also may lose the swept funding lawsuit, which is.
But you won't have those numbers by March.
But we won't. They're expecting it to be about half a billion dollars that the Supreme Court is going to say that, um, should be coming from the state and isn't. But my understanding is that the legislature does not have, um, it is not a priority for the legislator, legislature to make it a legislative fix, to have that money come from the state. But if the court rules that there must be this minimum funding for students, it's got to come from somewhere.
But that won't affect us probably till next year's budget, right?
Right.
Directly, so.
Probably won't affect.
For a couple of years.
Us necessarily, because we fund, I mean, I think they're talking about $8,000 a student, and most people spend around $19,000 a student. I mean, the Kirsaaj argument was capping it at $33,000 a student, and that's where 1,500 people came out and said, you can't just cap it, because we're going to lose all these programs.
So with those figures that I, we're asking for, that wouldn't be hard. You don't have to identif, to me at least, other people, if that's what you want. I don't need to see the light item and the serial number or whatever, just num, just the total ballpark figure and give people a sense that, um, I don't know if it's, I don't know how we're going to make up.
That's exactly what we envision of where all the revenue coming in, federal grants, what's restricted, what's unrestricted funds.
But just that loss, you know what I mean? It's just so big.
But I think, you know, to Mr. Gray's point, is that we have losses in some places and gains in others. So we also have to be careful on that, too. So what's our overall revenue stream coming in?
I think we also have to remember when we're building the budget, that gets approved in kind of that March, April, May, June timeframe, we don't have all the federal grant funds at those, at that time, right? So some of it is the hypothetical, some of it is the hypothetical of where is the contract negotiations going? All of those things, right? So we can come back to this team for sure with, uh, some additional data, and I can touch base with Heather prior to some of the budget meetings.
Absolutely. Perfect. Ms. Lampier?
I didn't know if it would be possible to, um, maybe, um, provide like a snapshot of what other states give to their schools? And what New Hampshire, as a state, gives to their schools? Just so, because people get so upset about property taxes, with good reason. And the people, and for so long, I've seen the state say, like, push stuff down on the municipalities and say, well, we don't have any money. You take care of it, you take care of it. And then the municipalities are like, well, we have to raise the property taxes, sorry. Um, and I'd like to see our state actually be held responsible for what we are and are not doing for our kids. And I, I know that that may be not be like something that's really your job, but I think it might be really, really helpful to have that as like, just to look so that people can see why, why our schools are in trouble. And I think, I would be really valuable for me to see.
Yeah, I think too, would it be helpful to see, like, even for our employees of the district? Would it be helpful to see like a total compensation almost statement, right? So what do I get paid? What are my benefits truly cost? What about all my vacation time and my sick time and my personal time? How does that look? What's that true bottom dollar at the end?
And I, yeah, and I really, I really would like to see, um, you know, uh, the grants and special revenue funds, as I've told you. And I like, um, Ms. Raymond's idea, um, about really making it clear about the amount of money that public schools have to spend on these charter schools, because our voucher program is really quite radical. And, um, they talk about taking money and giving it to school choice and stuff like that. And, um, people don't realize that when children go to voucher, go to, um, use those vouchers and go to charter schools, the money for any kind of special education program for transportation, it comes out of the public school budget. So we are almost getting charged twice for that. And I, I think it's just really important for the public to know as much as possible about that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Is it that it takes it out of those departments intentionally, or due to the choices made by our boards?
No, it's a state law.
I was gonna say, I've never understood how exactly the vouchers are taking money from like specific areas of our budget. So if anyone could explain that to me, that would be lovely.
They want the money to follow the student, instead of staying in the public school system. So if, if a student who happens to have special education needs says, oh, I'm going to go to a charter school, then the money, a certain amount of money from the state goes with that child to the charter school.
But then, wouldn't it be up to the school to determine where we make the cuts in our budget? In order to best help the child versus, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
It's just a matter of the, the amount, the full amount of money that the state gives to our school will go down, because the money is following the child. But then, as well as losing the child, the money, we were also still responsible for providing, providing them with transportation and any special education services.
Right, so we get $0 for a student who has transferred to private school but needs to say speech therapy. We get $0, but we drive them to school and we provide the speech therapist out of our budget.
For private school?
Yes.
For charter school, yeah.
Any student who lives within the Nashua School District who gets services that are special education services, that comes out of our budget.
And the transportation.
Regardless of where they go to school. And transportation K through, well, 1 through 8, if they live in Nashua, whether they go to private, public, or charter, we, the public school, pays for that. So for every student who's attending a private school or a charter school, we get $0 for them, but we pay out for transportation and any special education.
I am so sorry right now, because I have four buildings worth of people whose kids go to private school who are going to be so excited to find out that they can request transportation.
They already get transportation. This is a big issue that we have.
This is a big issue that I've been experiencing in the buildings that I live in. Families that do not want their children to come to public school for whatever reason. And their biggest issue ends up being transportation.
We absolutely, as a district, provide transportation to all charter school students in Nashua.
This is private school specifically, that's why I was questioning.
The private school is not also in Nashua. That's different. If the private school is in Merrimack or Massachusetts or whatever, we're not driving kids to Massachusetts every day.
If they are within the territory.
Correct. Unless it's a special education.
If we place them out of the city.
If they are an out-of-district student, then yes, there is some type of transportation cost. But if it is a student that the parents decide to go ahead and place out of the boundaries of the Nashua School District, then we are not responsible for that transportation.
So, and as you can hear, it's complicated, the budget. So I think that's why we need to do a general overview. Um, you know, just speaking with Ms. Bishop, like, we don't lose all the money as a pass-through. We provide services, we get a percentage back. So there, there are formulas, but essentially, again, I think this is where we need that general education as a board on what are we responsible for? And then, um, to your point, Ms. Darling, at the end of the day, once we go through, what are we federally obligated to do? What's our, the RSA is obligating us to do? And then the hard conversation is, at the end, is a board. If there's not enough money, where are we investing? And that's the, the difficult kind of conversations. But there are things that we're federally or, um, state mandated to do that we cannot cut. And so those things must get funded before possibly a program at one of the high schools.
I think that that was part of where my brain was going when I was listening to Ms. Lampier. It was like, the, that immediate of, wait, it can't be cutting out of the special education kids that are still here. That's a federal thing that we have to pay for. But I definitely can see now the multiple layers that lead from point A to point D. And I can't wait to hopefully have lots and lots of really long meetings where we ask these questions, break it down. I'm going to, my intention for 2025 is to come in here like a fifth grader and ask every question that I can think of, because it's exhausting knowing how little the people at this table, myself included, actually know about the things we are voting on. That's scary if you think about it. So I, I plan on being a thorn on your side this year and asking every stupid question I can think of.
Well, one of the things that's really important to me this year is, um, so often, as I've said to you guys before at this table, that, um, when it comes down to a lack of funding, it ends up that people say, oh, it all goes to special education. All it goes, all the money goes to, 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 um, English language learners. And my kids who don't have language issues or don't have special education aren't getting what they need because of all these other people. And that's not the truth. It shouldn't be divided that way. We should really look at it and let people know that it's not, you know, us versus them. It's like coming from the, the top, that the whole system is rigged to make us, to make parents, you know, butt heads about what their, their kids' individual needs, rather than say, well, the school should just be funded appropriately. So, you know.
Amen.
Yeah.
Okay, so throw your additional suggestions, requests to Dr. Andre. And he will put them together for all of the presentations. But yeah, I think we're we're in for a, a heavy couple of months. So. Okay, this brings us up to our liaison reports.
I actually have a quick thing I wanted to request to be brought into next month's agenda, if that's okay. I've been going through old board meetings from before my time. And one of the big things that had, has always prickled me is the prayer in the beginning of our meetings. Having looked into it so many times myself, I have personally felt it's unconstitutional and apparently the Supreme Court agrees with me. Which is great. So I would like to see us discuss this in a meeting formally as a board and consider removing the prayer at the beginning of our meeting based on the 50-plus precedents set by the Supreme Court.
Okay. I can put it on the, on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, liaison reports. Mr. Johnson?
Ed Council met on December 18th. We had a good discussion. We talked about safety in the buildings. That was recent to the shooting that happened. So safety was on people's minds. We discussed making sure that in- information got out to teachers and stuff. So when things happen. We discussed the middle schools and the the push-in which was, is still being a problem and the power shortage also being a problem. We also discussed, sorry, I'm just, it's September 18th, so.
Yes.
And we also discussed that DOJ would be continuing for two years. So we're, you know, given that information. I think Gary did a good job on his speaking about discussing the December responses to the survey. The positive, we've had positive reactions to the, sorry, just looking over here. To the sixth period, thank you. Yeah, positive reactions to the sixth period day. But like I said, the, the, the push-in has definitely been more on a negative side. And yep.
Okay.
That's it.
Excellent. Sharon normally does the JSSBC. I was not there last month. I was at a band concert, listening to Christmas music. It was horrible. I loved it. But if anybody else was at the JSSBC meeting, do you have updates that you can remember from four, three weeks ago? I'm gonna guess, all the projects are on time and under budget. And we're all very grateful for all of the hard work that's been happening in the committee.
Yeah, okay.
Second that.
Okay. Yeah. There were, and I don't remember the exact numbers. I would have written them down. But there were some preliminary numbers about how far under budget the McCarthy School and the entire middle school project would be. And it is more than a million dollars. So it's
Way more, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's pretty significant. I don't think it's that much. But he'll have some more numbers for us later this month. So I encourage anybody who is curious to tune in. Or pull it up on the internet. It's on the Port of Alderman's website.
Yep. Okay. So that's it for liaison reports. This brings us up to our second public comment portion of the night for items that are not on the agenda. Christina, how, how would you feel about holding on to that and then reading them?
I love that you're trying to get out of having to pronounce names. But I wasn't born yesterday.
I've done better. Once I got glasses and could see it. Mr. Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Townhouse D, Nashua, New Hampshire. So it's a new year and a new board session. I would like to speak about this board's use of non-public sessions. At your last board meeting, you chose and voted unanimously to go into non-public session to discuss the MOU. I looked at the RSA that was used to go into non-public. Now, those MOU discussions were just between me and my Dr. Andre and it was, it was something about like the reputation of a person. You know, my experience is that RSA in the past has been used for like to protect people's reputations who might be having disciplinary hearings. It seemed very inappropriate to use non-public session to do that discussion. There's considerable public interest in this para educator shortage. And the public would like to know where the individual board members stand on this issue. You know, I mean, WMUR reported on this, Nashua Inklink reported on this, Nashua Telegraph reported on this, Citizen and Public reported on this. Got considerable attention recently on Nashua Scoop. And, and certainly in other places as well. I think it's really difficult for, you know, we have an election coming up in November for voters to know where individual board members stand on important issues like this. Every time something comes up, a vote to go into non-public is taken. There should have been a discussion about this issue in public session. There was no reason whatsoever to go into non-public session for that issue. It was not negotiations. There was no formal negotiation process. If you're worried about my reputation, it proceeds itself. You have my permission to speak about in public. I think that that was pretty clear. Our conversations, there wasn't much to, to really be said. It was more about what are we going to do about this para educator shortage? So going forward this year, I hope that this board was really careful not to use non-public sessions on controversial issues so much. I know that that can sometimes be a difficult thing to do in public, but this is a democracy and people have a right to know where people stand. Thank you.
Amy Wheeler Tease?
Hello. I'm the mother of three children in the district. One has a 504 and two have, two have IEPs. For the last two years, two school years, one or more of my IEP children have had IEPs out of compliance because they were not receiving the para educator support that was A, written in there, but more importantly, that they needed. And an example of how this impacts students and families is that this year, because of the lack of para support for my daughter, Magdalena.
Oh. We can't discuss specific students in public, even though you are a mom. We can talk in generalities. If you have concerns about things that are happening specifically in your school, the policy dictates that there's a chain of command to go up. So if like you don't agree with an IEP or if you, things are not, things are not happening the way that it's written out to be, it needs to go up through.
So I've done that.
So if you don't agree with the outcome of it, then you request a hearing from the board?
That's not why I'm here.
So if you want to, I just wanna
The board doesn't know.
Just hold on one second.
Examples.
Yeah, just give in generalities. I just don't want to
Okay.
specifically call out specific schools or specific students, but I would love to hear some examples that you can provide.
Yep. So a current example is that my daughter and three of her peers were not gaining access to the general education classroom. They were not gaining access to the general curriculum that was taught in that classroom. And they were being kept in a restrictive environment for the entire length of the school day. This was not consistent with their IEPs. It's not the wishes of their case managers. And it is not where us parents support. This went on for weeks. And that meant my daughter wasn't getting social studies or science, and this is along with her peers. Because those are not subjects that she was getting in the intensive needs classroom. I've organized a group in town of other parents in my boat to learn that we have over 100 parents now at this point who have identified having some pretty serious issues with their students because of the lack of para support. This is not to one school. It's not to one principal. It's not to one case manager. This is a very serious issue. It is impacting our kids. In the case of mine, FAP is being violated. And so I'm here tonight in hopes that everyone is aware that this needs to be resolved with a sense of urgency and priority. Because we cannot have students who are not accessing their, their free and appropriate public education because we can't find an appropriate amount of staff. So thank you.
Thank you. If you want to follow up, Ms. Tease, you can email me and I can pass it along to, I can follow up with the superintendent, okay? Okay, so this brings us up to our board member comments. Ms. Raymond?
I pulled up some minutes from our meeting on December 16th. And the minutes do reflect that we went into non-public under A32C. But I really believe that we meant E, which rhymes with C and looks the same if you write it in lowercase, which is negotiations. And I, I take the point that maybe it's not official negotiations, but when one is being asked to negotiate something, I would imagine that that covers it. So I would move that we were, we I move that we update the record to reflect that it would have been E as an elephant under negotiations.
Okay.
Does anyone have a different recollection? Because when
No, that was mine.
A, a person's reputation doesn't even make sense here.
Right, no. Okay, I'll second that. To make that change.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I think it's just a type, like a misreading.
A motion to update the minutes from the December 16th meeting. About, to reflect correct reason for going into non-public under RSA 91A32E. E, E is an elephant because we sealed the minutes under 91A33, which is render a proposed action ineffective, which also applies to negotiations.
Yes.
Well, I apologize, Heather, because that was, you know, I was keeping track. I, I must have hit the wrong one. Thank you.
Unless anyone had a different recollection, in which case we can.
No, that was mine as well. Any comments or questions on that? All those in favor of, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Claffey?
I just, looking back at the few non-publics that we've had, it seems to me that more often than not, we're doing so at the recommendation of our legal counsel. And that he is often there when we do that. That was the case at our last meeting. So if you have a question about why are you shaking your head? Okay, this is our lawyer, not other lawyers, Mr. Hoffman. This is, this is our lawyer. I'm not a legal expert. I don't know that there's any board members here who are. So if he tells us that this is an issue that you shouldn't talk about in public, I'm going to defer to him. So if you have a problem, I don't want to throw our attorney under the, under the, under the
Bus?
Rug? Bus. I didn't want to say bus. But bring it up with him.
Yeah. Okay.
But, yeah.
Yeah, we
To the motion though, I really think we intended it to be E.
Yeah. So all those in favor of accepting the motion to amend the minutes to reflect the proper RSA, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Yes, Ms. Raymond?
I'll email you.
What?
I said I will email you. I'm, I'm I'm significantly concerned to hear that there are 100 parents who feel that their child is not getting their IEP appropriately. I'm also concerned to hear about because Ms. Lampier and I worked extensively on a restraint and seclusion policy about making sure the kids were in, not in restrictive environments, so.
And you weren't expecting this?
So I would just like some follow-up.
Yeah, I think we need to have a presentation on, on special ed.
Hey.
All right, we're a step ahead of you guys. We already had that planned as of the beginning of this meeting.
Okay.
As soon as we know the dates, I have definitely know some people that would love to attend. So if we know which meeting, we'll be discussing it.
It'll be on the agenda. Okay. You said you'd email me. Okay, so
That's, that's what I was gonna email you. I sent it out loud instead.
Okay, well, you can still do both. Okay, this brings us up to our board member comments. Ms. Darling, sorry, starting with you again.
I just want to thank the parent that came out. I really appreciate when people from our community, especially parents, come out and talk to us. Whether it's good, bad, ugly, it doesn't matter. I feel like we often fall into our own echo chambers and we hear a lot from the same groups of people that tell us the same things and I don't know about the rest of the people of this horseshoe. I know it makes some people squirming on discomfort, but I like being told that we're messing up because it's an opportunity for growth and change and getting better. We celebrate mistakes in my house every night. And that's something that I think we as a board need to be a little bit better about is admitting when we didn't necessarily make the right choice and move on and make better choices. So I really appreciate anytime we get to hear from the public when it's not and it's not always the same group of people. So thank you so much. I can't see if you're still here or not, but, oh, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. I just wanted to share about an email that I got from a student last week. There is a shared First Robotics team between the South High School and Academy for Science and Design. And they just won, I'm sorry, I don't know all their competitions, but they won a big competition. They're going now to state levels. They're very excited about it. But this student emailed me to let me know about First Robotics and about the First Lego League. And apparently they did a presentation at Bicentennial earlier this year and they developed six new Lego League teams at Bicentennial. And I just, I, it's really neat when students reach out to share their passions with other students. And so Dr. Andre and Ms. Bishop already know about this email because I sent it to them so that they can follow up with the student about he wants to get into some, he wants to make presentations to other principals and he would love to come to a board meeting. But I wanted to share it with the, with the wider community because I think it's really cool when students have a passion and they want to share their passion with their peers and with the community at large.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Prin knows all about Lego League.
I do. Actually, my son did it at Bicentennial last year. They went to states. I was very impressed. They were, it was their very first time trying, so. Yeah, we need more stuff like that.
They're building themselves a reputation.
They did. Yeah, I don't, they didn't really seem to have anything at Fairgrounds this year for, for that, but they did, yeah, whoop, sorry.
Okay, I got a very dramatic eye roll.
But no, they, they, they had a lot of fun doing that last year at Bicentennial. I'm glad to hear that they're going to be doing some more. They get to do it more in middle school and high school as well. So other than that, I have no comment.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Mr. Johnson?
I just, I'd like to thank the parent as well, coming out and talking about IEPs and making sure they're being followed. I think one of the things about this board we have is we have a lot of people who have been parents, who've had kids in school system or still have kids in school system and who have had kids on IEPs. So we've had personal experiences with it as well. One of the things discussed is to make sure about that chain is to make sure if your IEP is not being followed, to reach out to the school itself. And if you feel like it's still not being done, to reach out to the superintendent's office. And again, if it's still not being done, to request a hearing from the board. These, you know, if people have IEPs that are not being followed, we need to hear about it. And so I hope that people will follow through, that if they feel these aren't being done, they follow that chain and that they, you know, have that process done. I had, my son, I stayed in constant contact with the school. Anytime I felt like anything was not being done, I had positive responses and he is now on the dean's list in his freshman year at college. So you can, they can achieve. And we just have to stay on top of it. And again, you know, stay in touch with your school and reach out if you feel things are not being done.
And just to clarify, if you don't feel like your IEP, if it's not written correctly, it doesn't come to the board, it goes to the Department of Ed?
Thank you.
So. We wanna make sure that the correct information is out there for parents to know. We love to hear about it. We just don't have the legal mandates to.
Bring them to their procedural safeguards.
Their procedural safeguards.
Actually, is there somewhere where someone can find those procedural safeguards? Like, if there's.
I have at least 15 to 20 sitting at home. They're handed to you at every single IEP.
I'm just saying online, unless they don't have it.
Google it, and it'll pop up in the Department of Ed forms and stuff.
They're in one of our policies. I don't know the policy myself. I know Ms. Raymond will know that, you know, exactly where it is. But we did add phone numbers and stuff, contact information for people who wanna speak to the, you know, like, the Parents and Parent Information Center or the Disability Rights Center. And, you know, I hope that.
I think that was your October policy meeting.
Yeah, I hope that that is helpful for some parents.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I just wanna say, I'm thankful for the new year and everything that is being discussed here today. This is what we've been looking for, is more talk about what's going on in the schools and, you know, pre, looking at the budget and doing everything. So I just wanna thank all the staff that has worked so hard, and hopefully, we'll continue to talk these things out and get more detail in all things, because that's the one thing that I feel like for 2024, we were asking for a lot. So thank you for starting this meeting off with at least the hope of getting more of that.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
I mean, I just wanted to thank, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but I wanted to thank you for coming. And, you know, one of the reasons I ran for a school board in the first place was because I had a child with really serious, really serious disability. And he was only in second grade when he passed away, and the school was great, but he was also only in second grade. So I know that it gets harder as your kids get older. And, you know, it turns out, once you're on the board, you end up being kind of siloed. You don't hear a lot of the stuff. And I really value you coming, and I hope that, you know, your group will, you know, will try and make an effort to let us know how things go, even if we can't respond personally because of legal reasons or whatever. It's still really valuable information for us to have, so that we can help to advocate for your kids.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to touch upon at the organizational meeting that I forgot to do is, while we're looking at the next year and the next upcoming year, and we're talking the things that we wanna have and what we wanna plan for, I wanna remind us of the goals that we discussed back in September, October of 2024, when we were discussing what direction the board is gonna go in. So wanted to just kind of highlight some of those. In our SWOT analysis, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, we identified several key components to what we wanted to incorporate within our goals. And we came up with three really solid points that we wanted to focus on. The first one was enhancing the educational experience of all of our students, which I think fits in with our conversation here. When we're talking about all of our students, we're not just talking about the ones who are the easiest to teach. We can measure their academic growth through data, test scores, and enrollment in AP classes, as well as other, as well as other ways to identify weaknesses and equity and rigor and measure with our comprehensive data. We also discussed a goal of growing staff, grow staffing and decreasing turnout, easy measurable through HR and data, and then increase our connectedness with the community, which it sounds like we're already on board to do with our social media presence and our new communications. He's not a director, right?
Coordinator.
Coordinator. So I think the goals that we created several months ago are really starting to get some traction. Our meetings and our presentations going forward are really gonna focus on us meeting these objectives. These goals are gonna help us create what the agenda looks like, what kind of presentations we're gonna have, and what information we need in order to measure things effectively. So I think that we're going to have an excellent 2025. Keep up the communication, keep up the homework, keep up your forward-facing public involvement with all of your constituents and everybody who wants to talk to you, and enjoy all of the benefits that our school district has to offer. And I'm really looking forward to see the magnitude of change that we're going to be experiencing in the next couple of weeks. So I hope everybody had a good holiday vacation. We've got a fun couple of months coming up with budget, and it's nice seeing, not new faces, but I feel like I'm not staring at the same three people anymore. So this is fantastic. So if you guys have any questions about the budget, or if you want specific things in regards to the presentations, email them off to Dr. Andre. And I think that's it. I think we have a good plan for the next year, and we've got some momentum going, so I appreciate it. So now I'd be looking for.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I was like, is anybody gonna second it? Do we want to get out of here? All right, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:20.